Payer cuff surgery.
And how's that feel now?
I'm, I'm really doing well.
That's a tougher recovery.
Yeah, it is.
But it's hard, isn't it? Yeah, it's a hard surgery.
But I'm doing fine.
Oh, I do have a pin in here. Well, I'm glad, yeah, because last time it was really.
Yeah.
We're only four weeks out and it was pretty tough, yeah. Yeah.
I had sisters and sister-in-laws that had a paparazzi surgery and they kept saying, oh, it's worse than childbirth.
You're like, oh my gosh.
Geez, thanks. It wasn't that bad.
So you decided.
Childbirth's not that hard.
Yeah, so you said you had a baby just falling.
You're like, this is not setting us up for sex.
I don't know what you're complaining about.
Oh, my gosh.
You're like, this is so funny. That's so funny.
No, you were here.
Remind me.
Wendy.
Wendy, of course.
Hi, I did understand the situation.
I think that's all relative, too.
It is.
How bad childhood is, that's all relative.
I think taking care of a new baby is hardly an habit.
Probably.
The lack of sleep.
Raising teenagers is probably part of it.
They have a lot of.
That is immediately painful.
It depends on the teenager.
It does depend on the teenager. I'm finding adults are a different kind of challenge.
And these are people who frequent. Daycare, neighbors.
I don't know why that would be such a big concern.
Parking.
Yeah. Well, they can only have a certain amount of time.
Yeah.
I don't know.
No.
That's ridiculous.
I, I can't imagine that.
Now, you've got to get them first.
My kids must have posted screen, so it's not like shifting. I always forget how to fit. I never go there, like.
What's that, Gideon?
The long screen.
Is there something?
How you doing? Long time no see. What are you doing here?
I get that.
I, I gotta pick up the pace a little bit. I think by this time next year, I'll. I might be gone somewhere.
Why did you say that?
Yeah.
Well, I know the point, it's just that we want to stay to have people standing around. I totally, my kids, I don't think that really is all.
Ready?
Are we ready, Mike?
He says it every day.
I've got about thirty seconds, probably.
I guess I need to wait some hours.
What are you doing?
What time do we come for? Nothing, nothing got added here, did it?
Susan, that clock's not fast.
You'll have a better time. Well, I think you would have gotten set up on that one. So I felt.
Would like to welcome you to our planning commission meeting today on September ninth, twenty twenty-five. We'll begin our meeting today with an invocation by Commissioner Marchbanks, and then Commissioner Danielson will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee this afternoon and give thee thanks for our many blessings. We thank thee for the blessing and opportunity we have to live in this free country. And this beautiful city, Father in Heaven, we pray as we are about the business of the city this evening that we'll be clear-headed and make the right decisions. Again, we thank thee for all blessings and say these things humbly in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin our meeting tonight with an audible roll call of the commissioners. Sharon Call.
Here.
Mike Marchbanks.
Here.
Rob Callis.
Here.
Scott Thompson is excused. Jared Showers.
Here.
Karen Danielson.
Here.
Stephen Johnson, here.
Ryan Dome.
Here.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from our meeting that we held on August twelfth. The commissioners have received these minutes and have had a chance to review them. So at this time, I'll see if there's any corrections or additions that any of the commissioners saw.
I didn't see any.
They looked good to me. If they're good, I'd call for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a time for public comment. This is a time for the public to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody here for that purpose? Okay, not seeing any. Before we move on to item four, we have just a little procedural item we need to take care of. It's been recommended by our city attorney that we move item seven up to item five and then move item five and six down, just the ordering of those things. The, so can I have a motion to amend the, the agenda as such?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion is unanimous, and so just be aware that on the agenda, item seven is now item five and five and six are down. We'll now move on to item four. This is a conditional use permit. ABC Building Blocks Preschool LLC, it's a conditional use permit. The applicant is Wendy and Ed Magar, and if they want to come up and sit up here, they can. And then if you can write your name on the, the board, so we can make sure we spell it right in the, in the minutes. Our presenting staff is, is Brittany Wild, and we will turn the time over to Brittany.
Hello, thank you, Planning Commission.
And Brittany, I don't know if your mic's on.
Oh, maybe it is, I think.
That real, okay.
Okay, thank you. So I had worked with ABC Building Blocks and Wendy, the applicant. The applicant had requested a conditional use permit approval to use a portion of their home for an in-home preschool business. The Linden City standard land use table indicates that both private primary and secondary schools and child daycares require a conditional use permit in the residential R one twenty zones. The home occupation business must follow the regulations found in section seventeen point zero four point four hundred of the Linden City Code. The Linden City Code used to have a minimum requirement regarding the maximum number of children in a residential daycare. But March twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amendment was approved to remove that requirement so that residential daycare capacities and regulations can be governed by the Utah Department of Health and Human Services. With that, the requirements in section seventeen point oh four point four hundred of the Linden City Code, we had outlined right here through our required standards, that they obtain a home occupation business license, which is the conditional use permit approval, that the secondary residential use of the dwelling unit is not more than five hundred square feet or twenty-five percent of the total floor space in the dwelling unit, which Wendy did provide a site plan or a floor plan. They intend to use two hundred and sixty-nine point five square feet, and I have that here. I'm not really sure where this is within the home, and maybe Wendy could speak. Basement, okay, in the basement. Perfect, so. And then also that the daycare be carried entirely within the dwelling unit or the accessory structure, which they had just indicated, would be in the basement. Be carried by one or more of the residents of the immediate family who reside in the dwelling unit. Wendy will be the business license holder, and her daughter is going to be running the daycare in their home. Wendy is a resident of Linden City, whereas her daughter is a resident of the neighboring community of Orem. So we had kind of made that change to make sure that Wendy was the business license holder. Also, we have no more than one employee or part-time equivalent to one employee who does not live in the dwelling unit or work at home, which is her daughter, Julia. Does not have an external evidence of home occupation, does not display any exterior signs, anything like that. They, they were welcome to do that. No more than six motorized non-farm vehicles should be parked at the residence at any time. The applicant has provided a site plan showing that there is eight possible parking spaces along the curb outside of the property. And let me pull that up for you right here. They have about eight spaces that they could fit there. And the home occupation must not generate more than five vehicles of traffic to the residence during any hour. And finally, within our code, it states that the home occupation shall not generate any traffic before seven thirty AM or after six PM. For this business, the drop-off times will be from nine AM to nine thirty AM, and pickup will be from nine forty-five AM until twelve PM. Eleven forty-five AM to twelve PM. So with that, they have met that for our city code, the childcare business standards for the Utah Department of Health regulates the childcare centers and how, how many children can be in the home at once without having a business, a business license, is it a business license, childcare license?
State permit.
A state permit, excuse me. So the Utah Department of Health doesn't require Wendy or her daughter to have that license because they are going to be operating four hours or less within the home. So due to that, they meet that, that qualification as well. And then finally, the staff analysis, they have met almost all of these requirements for our code. The one concern that staff has is the amount of traffic that this area will be kind of seeing during those hours. The home occupation code allows five vehicle per hour. Currently, they're proposing that they'll have about ten, ten students in their daycare. With that, we just suggest that the homeowner needs to figure out how to stagger the drop-off times to meet the city code requirement. And that is, our only concern is the traffic.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners for either Brittany or the applicants?
I have a couple of questions, but I'd like to hear from them first. Maybe they'll answer.
So any, any additions you'd like to add?
Sure, on the parking, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so we have nine students enrolled, actually. Two of them walk and two of them carpool, so we actually have six cars. So I sat outside, oh, I'm sorry.
So I sat outside today and just to see what the traffic was like, and we had about three cars come around nine o'clock. They were there for about five minutes, and then the rest came at nine fifteen, which is actually when school actually starts. So there was never, I mean, I didn't see any problem, but.
Can I maybe make a follow-up on that? You said that they didn't need a license because of the size and the time. What is the maximum number that they can have before they need a state permit?
Um, I believe it's six, well, it depends on your hours. So if you are above the four-hour threshold, then, then you would need that license.
So it's more the hours, and I just wonder if that limited how many people could come or not? I mean, they're, they're proposing ten, but, but they don't want any, but just wondering what,
Yeah.
if we approve it, what the max would be.
Yeah, it's based on the hours.
Okay.
Yep.
I just, if you have three cars coming at nine and, and three more at nine fifteen, though, that does exceed that five per hour. So I guess that's what they're saying, is they, they've got to be staggered somehow if you're above five.
Staggering them at nine and nine fifteen, I mean, do we want, I don't want them to come at an extra forty-five?
Not all at the same time, is that what's staggering?
You need to have five within an hour period of time.
So we'd have to wait another hour for the other student to start?
Well, or work something out, because they only, the, that's the code, is that you can only have five cars per hour.
Okay, we'll figure out.
Mike, do you have any comment on that, or?
I mean, they, they can set it up so some could come at eight fifty-five and the others come at nine fifteen.
Oh, oh, okay, so it's an hour, it's not like we have to wait another whole sixty?
Twenty minutes.
Okay, that's not a problem. We have some parents that, yeah.
Within each hour, you can have more than five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's not a problem.
So you can work something out.
Yeah, we'll just ask the parents to sign up for a time.
Yeah, and that, that will be enforced complaint-driven, so the more you're good neighbors, and make sure people don't park in front of other people's houses and.
Yeah, my neighbors are.
Soon as it starts, we're not going to send an enforcement officer to count. So, but just be aware that, that, that's what the code says, and so if you do get where that becomes an issue, that's, will be a condition of this permit, is that you need to, to, to meet those requirements.
Stagger the drop-offs.
Yeah. So that they don't have them. Any more questions? Or anything else you'd like to say before?
No, I think, I think we're good.
Okay. Rob?
Just a couple of concerns and questions. My children all went to home preschools, and it's, so it was a big part of our child rearing, and it was great. So I commend you for that. My concerns are, so it sounds like that the person that owns this is not living in Linden. So they're, you're coming to Linden to do this school. That's a little bit unsettling to me that the owner of the home is not part of the business, really. I know she's got the license or, or it's being put into her name, but realistically, you'll be running the school, right? Yeah. I just wanted to voice that that's a concern, and I don't know that we want to solicit a lot of people from outside the city of Linden to come and use homes in Linden for their home-based businesses. The biggest concern I have, and in, in actuality, it might not be a problem because of the way you said people are dropping off, but your little map that shows the eight parking stalls, that looks pretty impactful to your neighbor, to me. I don't see how they would back out of their driveway without backing into car seven and eight.
Well, we just put eight on there because we could fit it, but, I mean, I said we only have six cars maximum, so.
What's the requirement?
Five cars per hour.
Five cars per hour.
Okay. Yeah, I think that seven and eight is not a good thing. I mean.
Seven and eight, that's right outside my driveway. I don't know what.
Well, if you look at the car, the house, it's just to the towards the.
You, to you, it looks like eight would encroach.
How would you back out of that driveway and not hit eight?
Oh, I see.
It's a, a larger cul-de-sac than, than a lot.
Don't look like it, but.
It is a very big cul-de-sac, we have a very big.
Cul-de-sacs are cul-de-sacs.
They are.
Fifty feet. Or a hundred feet.
Maybe the, the eight, the drawing of the cars are maybe much bigger than cars would actually be.
Maybe so, maybe so.
Oh, yeah.
It's one of those things where if, if it was a problem, the neighbor would probably tell you and you would take care of it.
Yeah.
My daughter parks there all the time, she's like number eight. And she's never been a problem, so.
Okay.
And I guess with that, I see more of a possible problem at pickup. You know, if people arrive ten to fifteen minutes early and they all, I just imagine my kids at school, you know, and you start lining up an hour early somewhere to get a good parking spot. To get the best spot to pick your kids up or to get them to dance or whatever, right? Probably not as much with this, but can you maybe explain the pickup process a little bit? It, it would sound like they were playing in the backyard till they were picked up. I mean, there, there'll be winter time that they won't be in the backyard, but is it something where it's more fluid? So that the same thing, the, the requirement of the five cars per hour, we kind of want to stagger that pickup time a little bit, so they're not all possible ten at, there at the same time.
Yeah, the school, I mean, we have from eleven forty-five to twelve. We could do eleven forty-five to twelve-ten or something like that, if that, if that works. We're just playing in the backyard with them, and parents come during those fifteen minutes, and nobody, they're not all there at the same time, but I mean, I can't guarantee they won't all arrive at the same time, but we could, we could ask them to. Some come at just after twelve or something.
I think that's just something would, so that you're not in violation and get, get
Right.
turned in by someone that gets upset, you know? That's a recommendation, is to look at how that, what pickup could go, that they're just not stacked, you know, that they're not stacked up during that time.
Okay.
That'd be one thing I'd have any.
Are you assisting in the preschool?
I'm just there to kind of, when she needs somebody during arts and crafts, and if somebody's crying, I'll go down and help because I'm there, but. And I usually go.
Can I help them plant lettuce today?
She helped, yeah. So, yeah, we're kind of just all having fun with it. It's, it's a lot of fun to have four-year-olds in the house again, so.
I have one more question of staff. Michael, what is the code? Do, do they have to provide any off-street parking?
Leave home occupations do. You can actually pull into the driveway and drop people off there, too. Solve that one.
While they're looking that up, for what it's worth, I looked it up on Google Maps, it's an eighty-foot cul-de-sac. So it is bigger than most.
Most cul-de-sacs are a hundred feet.
Are they? Oh, that, that was curb-to-curb, that wasn't including the sidewalks. Excuse me.
I think you can have up to six parking spots.
And anything over that has to be off, off-road, or?
Oh, it just says that's, that's the max you can have, so that's as many.
So there's no requirement for off-street parking?
Right, it's just you have to provide, be able to provide so much on, off-street parking.
But actually, that brings up a good point, we could just have people come into our driveway and drive along.
Yeah, you could. Or you could tear up some of that grass and put a parkway, parking lot.
Okay. Less mowing, so.
You wouldn't like that, really. Go to Orem. No, grandpa wouldn't say that.
My daughter actually probably spends more time in Linden with us than she does.
Those are my only concerns. Thank you.
Anything else from?
Any of the commissioners? Any discussion that the commissioner would like to have?
Just like you said, that it's conditional use are, it, it's kind of based on keeping your neighbors happy
Right.
because it's, it is complaint-driven if there's any problems.
And we spoke with all the neighbors and let them know and told them, you know, the situation, and they've known Julia since birth, so they're all just thrilled that she's found something she loves to do, so they're very supportive, so.
So from, from my point of view, our job is to look at, see if there's any conditions that can't be mitigated. I think they've come up with good proposals to mitigate them, and like we said, it'll be complaint-driven if there are ones that we'll have, then it would come back to us to look at whether the conditions are being met, so.
Sounds good.
If there's no other discussion, I'd call for someone to make a motion.
I can make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to approve the applicant's request for a conditional use permit to use the residential property located at seven thirty east, one hundred north for an in-home preschool business with the following conditions. The applicant will comply with the home occupation requirements found in the Linden City Code section seventeen point zero four point four zero zero. Two, the business will only be operated by a resident of the home. Three, no more than six vehicles may be parked at the resident at one time. Four, the business will not generate more than five vehicles of traffic to the resident during an hour, any hour. The home occupation shall not generate any traffic before nine AM and after twelve PM. Five, drop-off pickup for the students will only occur on the property or directly in front of the property. Six, hours of operation for the home occupation business will be between nine AM and twelve PM. If the business exceeds these hours, they will make application to amend their conditional use permit. Seven, the applicant will continually maintain a Linden City home occupation license, and eight, all items of the staff report. Now, one of the conditions we do have on this, and Rob brought this up, though, is two, the business will only be operated by a resident of the home.
Well, and I think they can have the one employee, but I don't know if we need to make that in the motion, right? As a home occupation, they can, they can have an employee. You know, the other thing.
I don't know, that's the way that's worded.
Right, so I, I wonder if we want to reword that a little bit, or the drop-off and pickup for students will only occur between nine and twelve? You know, I don't know if we want to broaden that a little bit, the hours of operation, but.
Eight forty-five.
Eight forty-five to twelve fifteen, or something like that.
Well, the occupant, the, the resident is actually the owner of the license, Wendy's the.
Right, so I think we're okay on that, just clarify that that means operated means owned. And, and, you know, you're the liable person, I guess, for the business.
Do we need to change that as far as the wording on that?
That might be, I'm sorry. Regarding the parking or hours, I think her business description said nine fifteen to eleven forty-five, we made it nine to twelve.
Okay.
Might be, maybe go eight forty-five to twelve fifteen.
Okay, yeah, just to broaden that a little bit.
Yeah, and then as far as the business will only be operated by a resident of the home, do we need to change the wording on that if, if the rest, if the business is being operated by someone that lives outside the city?
I mean.
You have to define operating.
It's kind of splitting hairs a little bit.
Yeah, but I wondered, just so that we have.
We're still, Wendy.
Look to Wendy if there's a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, she's got the liability, they're operating in the sense that they're maintaining the yard, they're maintaining the space. They're probably interacting with parents, and she's doing an employee, so I, I'm okay with that. I don't, I don't have a problem with defining operating in the way that they're proposing to do it.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure we were okay on that. So do we want to change that eight forty-five AM to twelve fifteen PM on the times?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have a motion that has been amended as, you know, to those times being corrected.
Yeah. One question before the second.
Okay.
And we vote. Did I understand you're already operating?
Yes, we started just last week, was the beginning. We didn't, yeah, we'd already, we didn't realize that we had to wait till September ninth for the planning commission.
That's fine, okay. I have a motion with those amendments.
I second that. You got any other questions? I'd, I'd second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The motion carries unanimously. This does not need to go to city council, so you have your conditional use permit, work with city staff and whatever they need, and hopefully there'll be no complaints and we won't have to address this again. Looking forward to you, you being able to operate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Okay, as noted, we will now go to the item that's numbered seven, that we moved to number five on our agenda. Problem is I have to scroll all the way down there, so give me just one second.
And most of the rendering items and things are in number five, so if you want to stay at five, you
And most of the rendering items and things are in number five, so if you want to stay at five, you could.
Okay. Um, let me see, there's six, seven. Okay, so we're on item number seven, which is a proposed development agreement for Westland Development LLC. The applicant is Westland Development. And if they want to come up and whoever's representing them... Just a little bit of background, this is the agreement we've asked staff to bring back from the items that were five and six on the agenda that we continued from last time. We've already held the public hearing on five and six, but we will have time for a public hearing on item seven. But we will wait till after the presentation and questions from the commission for the applicants, and then we'll open it up for the public hearing time. Okay, Mike Florence is presenting staff, so we'll turn the time over to him.
Okay, just as a reminder, the applicants are looking at developing these three parcels there on eight hundred west in the Canopy Business Park. We went into quite a bit of detail last time, but they are proposing to construct, four office warehouse buildings. We went over the site plan last time. So from our last meeting, it was continued, and the recommendation was to have the developer file an application for a development agreement. And so the developer submitted that application. We, over the last month, we've worked on that development agreement. And then that's been provided to the planning commission for review. Now, since I sent that out on Friday, I've got a couple tweaks to that that I'd like to go through. And so we're going to go through each one of these items. So as part of the development agreement, these would be the developer obligations. This is, these are standard requirements and regulations that would be specific to this development, such as heights, setbacks, materials, those types of things. So number one, the developer agrees to construct the development consistent with the concept site plan and architectural plans and the requirements set forth in this agreement and city code. So going back to our renderings here, the developer, these two buildings, A and B, he's calling out as a wood construction. It'd be a black brick, black and white brick, grayish wood panel, construction like your hardy board. And then building C and D would be a concrete tilt-up, tilt-up buildings, again, painted white or black and with woodborne, woodboard form concrete. So then when they form that concrete, it makes it look like that wood texture is part of the tilt-up building. Two, the developer will construct four office warehouse buildings of approximately one hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet as identified in that site plan that we just saw for office warehouse retail and manufacturing spaces on four separate pad sites. The buildings will be constructed with the design and materials as shown in exhibit B or exhibit C, including the architectural requirements as found in the regional commercial zone. So he'll have to meet the requirements that he's providing plus those, the regional commercial design standards that are in the code. So that way we get, you know, a high design standard for these buildings. Number three, this is, I want to spend a little bit of time on number three. So it says the maximum height of any building will be thirty-five feet to the top of the parapet. The setback in height transition requirements from residential as found in seventeen forty-eight twenty will be applied to this development and the regional commercial zone as it pertains to this property. So under our commercial general zone, that's our zoning along State Street, we have this requirement, let me go back to it, I got out of it when we went to the home occupation ordinance. Wrong one. So we do have this requirement that a building needs to be forty feet back from any residential use. Now, that only applies to the State Street zoning. But originally, I thought that might be good to have with this project as well, that there be a minimum forty-foot setback. Last time when we were here, the developer was proposing a thirty-foot setback. And then we have this height transition. So for every, for every, let's say, two additional foot of setback for every one foot over thirty feet. So if your building is thirty-two feet in height, you would have a forty-four-foot setback. The developer would really like to, and jump in here with me, Todd, when you get a chance, but would like a thirty-foot setback. And some of the reasoning from him and his architect is that they are not putting any parking in between the buildings and the residents. And that, I can see that point where that won't have a significant impact. You won't, you'll be protected from any lights or sounds from cars in that area. And they'll be landscaping that as well on both sides of the trail. And so that is some, one of their requests is to change that section of the development agreement.
I think I also did note in our last meeting...
Let me have you speak closely.
Oh, sorry. In our last meeting, a couple of the residents were kind of talking about windows looking into their backyard. So those ones that go against the, there won't be any windows in the back, so it won't disrupt any of their privacy or anything along those lines.
Which ones?
A and C. So all the windows will be on the front, so nothing will be where it'll protect them because it's currently zoned where they had an approved office building that they... Correct me if I'm wrong. Kind of concern of people actually being in the office looking into their backyard where this would prevent that because there would be no windows in the back as well.
Another driving factor to that too is if you look at this site plan with all the easements and everything that are on this property, I mean, if we got rid of the trail right there, sure, we could go to forty-foot because I could use that as parking lot back there, but you can't. And if we set back another ten feet, we get into the, there's a drain is lying through the middle of that property that we asked originally if we could move, well, that can't be moved either. So you start shaving off maybe an entire building or half of a building, and pretty soon the setback makes this piece of property a lot less developable. So, but last time we were here, that wasn't any of the concerns with the setback. It was more about lighting and seeing in the backyards. If we did a parking lot, well, now there's going to be different lighting for a parking lot, and that's harder to keep out of your backyard. So there's a lot of things, probably what we could, you know, look at is, I mean, the landscape and everything along there is going to be nice anyway, and we'll get to another part of this with a seven-foot wall, so.
So that is one item. Any comments or discussion on that? So if you were to change that, then we would put a minimum thirty-foot setback on there. Change that section to a thirty, minimum thirty-foot setback. Number four, minimum seven-foot wall will be constructed as a buffer between the commercial and residential properties. Only down-directed lighting will be permitted on the north elevation of buildings A and C. A photometric study will be provided for the development as part of the site plan approval review to ensure no light trespass or spillover into the residential neighborhood. That's pretty common. We require those for all of, all site plan approvals so that they'll go out there and meter. When they submit their building plans, they'll know what type of lighting is on there. They'll submit what the, what that is at the property line from the type of lighting. And so we can see if it's all zeros at the property line, then that'll be in compliance.
You know, is there, with the trail back there, is there going to be some light? Or is it going to be just dark?
Light to the east of it where the trail currently is?
I mean, the downlighting on the back of the building will...
So there will be some downlighting on the back of the building, a little bit?
That'll help, but yeah, if...
Just for security.
If my requirements to light up the trail, then that hasn't been addressed.
No, I'm just wondering if there was, there'll be some downlight, so it's not going to be a dark alley back there.
They'll want some for their own security.
Yeah.
That's my question. There'll be some, so it's just not this dark alley.
Maybe a light over, where you'll be below, most likely below the fence line of seven feet.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
No overhead doors will be installed on the north elevations of buildings A and C. All overhead doors are required to be constructed of glass to increase the architectural design of the buildings. That came from the renderings that we saw. I did strike out part of number seven because it's repetitive from, with number two about meeting the commercial, regional commercial design standards. But it continues, buildings A and B will have the west building entrances oriented to eight hundred west to meet the architectural requirements of Linden City Code seventeen fifty-four fifty. If you look at their renderings, it'll be easy for them. They... See if I can find the right one. There's a lot of different renderings in here, but I think this is what you would see from eight hundred west, basically moving that door to this window area here. So... Let's see. The area between buildings A and C and the residential property boundary will be landscaped. Both sides of the trail will also be landscaped. Trees meeting the city development requirements will be planted every thirty feet the length of buildings A and C. And so going back to the the site plan here, in front of buildings A and C, you'll have trees every thirty feet along there. No outdoor storage is permitted between the north elevation of buildings A and C and the residential property boundary. The zoning map amendment is conditioned upon the applicant signing the development agreement, applying to amend the existing law, existing subdivision plats and parcel. And I struck this out because of number eleven, approval of the subdivision by Linden City. They plan on doing a two-lot subdivision for phasing of the development. And so originally, they, in our initial discussions, we had talked, you know, like our development review committee, we had talked about the property being consolidated. A change to that is they want to do two lots now. So basically, they have to sign the agreement, subdivide the lot. And if they don't do that, then the research and business zone takes, remains in place.
And Michael, just to add on that, the only reason for that is based on the environment right now, financing, the way that everything is. I don't want to be forced to have to do all of it at once if we maybe phase it is better.
Do you know, how you're going to phase it as far as, you're going to do the...
Buildings A and B and then C and D. Those are just the two phases. Whether one goes first or the other, I don't know yet.
Okay.
I mean, ideally, I'd love to say it's in four lots and you could do four phases if you had to, but...
But if...
Do you have to have egress if you do it that way? Egress, do you have to have, you know, two entrances?
Well, we would, we would put in the ingress, egress. All that underground stuff would probably go in anyway. But yes, good point.
And then the last item, number twelve, as we went through the regional commercial zone, there are a number of uses we felt that should probably be prohibited next to residential. Those were convenience store, gas service, dance club, music venue, exhibit hall, convention centers, amusement parks, golf driving range, which we won't have anyways, recreation center, bowling lanes, roller skating rink and water slides. So this, so these items would structure how the development is constructed. It would need to meet that site plan that we see here. And then it would need to meet those building elevations and material requirements as found in these renderings.
So if we're to make a motion, would we need to modify number three a little bit just to state that it'll be a thirty-foot maximum?
Yeah.
With a thirty, with a thirty-foot setback?
Yeah, I think you'd make a motion to recommend approval to the city council based on the changes tonight and the thirty-foot setback from residential.
Are we changing the maximum?
Not height, it's just the setback.
I think I said height, setback.
Could we also clarify, and maybe this goes without saying, but the word says dance club. Obviously, we don't look, I mean, we're talking about a nightclub, dance club, correct?
Right.
But if someone like a dance studio or something like that, that's not...
That'd be fine.
Okay, just make sure. I don't know if that needs to be covered or if that's...
No, that's a separate use.
And we talked about no windows on the north side. I didn't see that in here as called out, but is that just what your current plan is then?
That, I mean, you can state that in there if you'd like, you know. I'm not sure on the rendering, I didn't look closer. If they were really small, if they were...
Yeah, if there's any, it's, they're higher up and they're for light. You know, I think if we put in no windows, then it kind of, I don't think you'd want that. I think it would just aesthetically look better, but it also wouldn't be somebody that's got a ten-by-ten window that's a slider out to a deck to look at the backyards. That's not, that's...
And it's going to be up on the warehouse section of it, so it's going to be twenty feet high.
I mean, maybe you, maybe you could say that windows are allowed, only clear story windows are allowed.
Like a transom.
And those are the ones that people can't see out of. Especially like if this is going to be two stories. You'd, that, I believe buildings A and B, aren't they two stories?
Buildings A and B would be two-story.
Yeah, so you'd say building A could not have windows, only, only, let's see, only clear story windows on building A for that north elevation.
You'd almost put it in number six with the overhead doors.
Yeah.
So the language on that again?
That on building A, only clear story windows on the second story.
C.
Building C's, well, yes, you could, I was thinking it's not two stories, but is that correct?
It's not two stories if somebody builds out a loft or something for storage or whatever. That's, yeah, you don't know who's going to do that. That's why I think that you got to kind of have some windows for lighting. And even if it was obscured some ways where they're not looking out, I don't know. You just, you don't want to limit somebody to say, well, I'm buying this unit and this is how I'm designing it. And now upstairs, if I do it, I really can't have an office or anything because it's, I got no window. I got, you know, so you kind of, you do need to be careful with that, even though I understand the concern about, you know, looking into somebody's backyard. And so that's why we're doing this, but there's probably a middle ground there to where they can have some lighting. But, you know, it's like this window up here that's, you know.
So I guess it would be buildings A and C.
I had to look that word up. Good word, clear story.
And actually, you know, now that I think of it...
When you, when you said a certain type of wind...
Yeah, clear story, let me pull that up.
Well, now that I think about it.
Know what that is.
Now that I think about it, too, if you look at building B, they're front to back. So anybody that's looking to put an office in the backside, what we do is we actually do skylights instead. So on some of these units, we could install the skylights so they do have...
Natural light.
Natural light, so.
Like this image?
Yeah, something like that.
They're more like this, so you can't see out of them.
Yeah, I just hadn't heard that term before. I wrote it down so I can remember.
So does the commission have any questions about these other requirements in the development agreement? Anything about the renderings or the, or the site plan?
I'm not familiar with this trail and who owns it, who maintains it, and why it's there and where it goes and what the future of it is, I mean...
It's a real trail.
It's the Linden Heritage Trail.
That's part of the Linden Heritage Trail?
It is.
No, I don't think so.
Heritage Trail, is it the Linden connects in?
Heritage Trail goes along Eighth West and then turns right.
Yeah, it's just a neighborhood trail that connects to the Herit, Linden Heritage Trail. So here's the, Linden Heritage Trail is right here.
Comes off Eighth West and comes down.
Exactly, and heads over Geneva Road.
So who's responsible for, is this city maintained?
The city's responsible for it, yeah. So it was a way to connect this neighborhood, you know, to the rest of the neighborhood, the residence, the residential homes to the rest of the development and things.
There's a walking, biking connection.
And recently, we've worked with the property owner, and there was a garage right here. They tore that down and we extended the trail straight through here.
And it is brand-new.
Where does it go on the east side? Show me again on the east.
It just goes through the homes, right?
Right there.
Oh, okay.
Nice raspberry patch going down through there.
Yeah, oh, right here.
There it is, right there.
So as far as lighting that, that would be the city's responsibility. If somebody felt like it needed to be lighted, lit.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's enough light around from the buildings. But if we needed to, yeah, that'd be the city's responsibility.
It could be lit maybe from that fence that's going up or something. I mean, obviously, that's going to cost a lot of money.
Yeah, we'll have Parks and Rec look at that and see if that's...
But some kind of a light that just sits on the fence, every pillar or something can light that up. Okay, I just was trying to understand who maintains that.
Yeah, in fact, we just redid it, I think.
I have a question about, so they just redid that trail where they're gonna go straight behind our houses?
So let, let.
You're talking about landscaping.
Hey, sir, let, let them.
Well, we wait just a second for the public hearing and then we'll, well, then we can get that all on record. Anything else from the commission before we open up the public hearing, any questions to the developer or to staff?
Just, did you have anything else to share with? Thank you for working with the.
And, and are you good with the, the city's obligations, I mean, have you read this and feel very good about it?
Yeah, we went back and forth with Michael and went through a few versions, more than a few, so. I mean, I think it's, it's all doable and hopefully it's acceptable to, you know, to you and the neighbors.
The lack of water slides could really be a. Getting those leased up.
Those are big.
Seems like a great location if we could just have one right there.
Yeah. Okay, with that then, um, why don't we, uh, I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing, so we can hear from the public.
So moved.
Open a public hearing on this item?
Uh, motion?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now open and so we have a public, I, we have at least one member of the public that'd like to address this, if you'd come up, so you can use the microphone, so we can hear you and get it on the record and.
See, my question maybe for uh the developers is, they just redid that trail behind the houses and. Up until a certain point where the trail turned, it had that easement for landscaping on both sides of the trail. But where they extended it, it basically goes right up against the fence, so there's no room for landscaping on the, the side towards the residential where they extended it. That was just a question of mine, if, if they were gonna redo it again to have a little bit.
Not aware of it, maybe if you pull up our, I mean, like, yeah, I don't want to tear up a trail and redo a trail, but I would still do my landscaping within the thirty foot setback, I, whether it's on both sides. Maybe we need to change the development agreement to that, cause my rendering then is off.
So you're saying that down by A, it's up against the fence?
Yeah, but the trail used to turn and up until there, they had like four feet for landscaping the whole way, but then right where they redid it, they just kind of angled it over to the, the fence. It looks kind of bad, actually, but anyways.
But so is the wall, eh, or is the wall gonna be right on the property line, isn't it?
Yeah, the wall is gonna be on the property line.
It'll be on the property line, so it'll be, they'll, it, they kind of do that purposely not to have a weed strip. Cause they'll landscape right up to the wall on their side, but just like you do, up to the fence on your side.
It's just different than where it is everywhere else, but that's another question, maybe is the wall gonna replace the fence, or do they just put it up against our back fences?
I think it's up to you.
It's between, I guess, me and you, you know?
And I guess if, if you want that stipulated, are, are you interested, I mean, are you really?
I doubt they want to create an easement on their side of the property for extra landscaping, I, I wouldn't.
Well, but for the fence, I mean, do we need to play anything to say that they don't want it to be replaced, they want their fence and then, I mean, that's the only thing, I guess, and.
Typically, I would install a fence, I'm not in the business of tearing down fences and hauling other fences away, so, I mean, I guess. We can work with it, but usually when I put a fence, it's right on my property line.
You'll do it right on the, I mean, if it's already on the property line, though, it just.
Yeah, then you could take yours down, I mean, I don't know, but.
But I guess, are they willing to not put it, and to put it one half foot or whatever, a fence post with, with.
Yeah.
Just on your property, cause if the fence is already on the property line, I mean, that, those are things that I don't know if have been discussed, but.
Are you putting a tilt up, uh, precast concrete?
I haven't got that far, seven foot is what I got, too.
I know when you do that, the footing is kind of about a foot.
Yeah, I mean, footings are tough that way, you have sprinkler damage and all that, so yeah, you, you work with neighbors on that for sure.
Does need to be, uh, let me look at that again.
They said masonry or something, right?
Yeah, masonry or concrete or something, yeah.
Did they do it, cause it's an easement?
I think the.
Oh, sorry, Luke Gilman is my name.
Okay.
I would say Luke, I think probably the kids. Something we've worked through, figured out fence wise.
Okay.
You know, it's, that's, I mean, that, much as we don't, you know, as we like talking about tearing it down, we also understand that. You got a fence there, we gotta work together to make it right on both sides.
Yeah, the, the vinyl fence now is six foot, so if you put a seven foot concrete fence right up against it, it's gonna look funny, so either it's gotta come down or something, so.
And I think the seven foot came from one of the neighbors.
It, that's a city ord, it's a city ordinance for seven.
Yeah, eight would be better than seven, but.
And the, and the requirement is at least seven.
Yeah.
And we've found that most developers, it's cheaper to get an eight foot than it is a seven, and that's totally up to the, the developer to, but the requirement is at least seven.
Okay.
With that.
I don't think I had any other questions, just the trail and that landscape easement and then the fence, so.
Okay.
With that trail being right up to the property line or fence, we'll need to just modify that language to say. You know, where there is a, maybe a gap between the fence and the trail, it'll be landscaped.
And where there isn't?
In the agreement?
Yeah, yeah, cause we said do, landscape both sides of the.
Trail.
Trail, and it's gonna be very difficult to do that. Where applicable or something like that, yeah.
So I'm, I'm Caleb Gilman, um, I wasn't here last week, what are these buildings, the intended use, just anybody can?
So I think the U, the U, you have it, go ahead.
So, so, hey, real, real quick.
Yeah, the, sorry, I.
We just have to have everybody on the microphone.
Yes, we have to have on the microphone, so what we'll do is, we'll first ask Mike to answer it and then have the developers clarify it if, if he's, if, if there are needs of any clarification, just so that we're all on the microphone and. And plus, we should address questions to the, the commission and then we'll, we'll seek for answers.
So Mike, what are the intended uses for?
So fr- from the last meeting we had, I, the developer is trying to create a office warehouse use where small businesses can go in, they can rent a, you know. Minimum one, maybe more units for, you know, varying type of, various types of business, whether it's a plumbing business or electrical business or. Someone's doing retail out of them, we get a lot of retail businesses that come out of these, and so it's just a flex warehouse office space.
Okay, so as far as hours of operation, is there a, anything stipulated in there?
There's not, we typically, we don't have hours of operation in any of our commercial zones.
Okay, so that would raise a concern, if they do allow those windows, I forgot the name um already, but, and they're, they're up there.
Clear story.
Clear story windows, and they're working in these offices until midnight or all hours of the night, then that, then that light comes out. So I would, I would like to see skylights um in our backyard rather than any kind of window on that, on that north face, if that's possible. And also, we run a countertop business where, I don't know if, if we were to rent one of these buildings. And start making dust and open up that back door, it's gonna blow all kinds of stuff, and if it was a granite business, it's gonna blow silica and then harmful dust into our backyards, so.
I think that's why there's, there's no doors on that.
Door.
There could be a ban door, yes.
We open up that man door for ventilation, but we're in an area where that's not a problem, and, and we create a ton of dust, so I don't know. I mean, that's a concern, too, hours of operation and, and what they're producing and kicking into the backyard through that man door even, and also just the light coming from that window. I don't mind skylights to get that natural light, but, but I, I would prefer not to have any lights on that backside, but that's just something to consider.
Thank you so much. Um, anybody else from the public that would like to address the commission?
As far as uses, these are the only types of manufacturing uses, so general food manufacturing, candy and confectionery products, a brewery. Apparel, publishing, printing, professional scientific photographic instruments, motion picture production, high tech manufacturing. Indoor production and storage only, may not produce objectional noises, odors or other externalities to the detriment of surrounding properties. So it's very, very limited manufacturing, so.
From a manufacturing standpoint.
So we would not allow a, a countertop business, a wood shop, a welding shop to.
They'd, they'd be more found in our industrial zone.
Okay. Thank you for answering that question. Anything you want to say from the comments from the public before we close the public hearing?
Yeah, I, I would, I would just clarify that um even a transom window like that up there, I understand the concern. But it would almost kind of be like me saying to my neighbor, turn off your garage light at a certain time at night, you know, you can hardly ever, that's a hard one. Just to have windows, whether somebody has coverings on their windows or not, so I don't know how we address that, maybe in the uses and their operating hours, that's probably in a business license. Type of format, but kind of hard to put in a development agreement, can't have a window on the side just because somebody might have it on at eleven o'clock at night, I don't know.
Thank you so much, any, anybody now from the public? Last chance to um address the commission, I shouldn't say last chance, another chance to address the commission if you'd like. Okay, hearing done from the public, I'll call to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so now it's um our turn, any questions, uh, any or discussion from the commission?
What's the distance from the buildings to the homes?
Um, let's see.
With the light concerned.
Probably fifty feet.
You've got a thirty feet setback and then you've got, what, what's the setback on the home side?
Thirty, thirty something feet, maybe.
Yeah, so you've got thirty on each side.
More than that, actually, probably fifty.
Yeah, but if you have thirty on each.
You're going off and out building, but.
Well, don't you have a thirty foot setback in there and then a thirty foot on the home?
He was just snapping a line off of an, a shed instead of the home.
Yeah.
You're about a hundred and fifteen, well, that one's closer, so maybe ninety feet.
Probably be the shortest distance you'd have.
Between a built, the building and the home?
Almost a hundred feet, and a lot of them are a lot more that away.
This is the big backyard.
Mm-hmm.
And we, and we all, you will have trees too, every thirty feet along that, that will, will mature as well.
So you said that there needed to be on the landscaping. We needed to be stipulated that um when there's a gap between the fence and the trail, it needs to be landscaped, where would that fit in?
Let's see, where's this?
It's, it's in the agreement, we just need to say that where it can't be.
A number eight, both sides of the trail will be landscaped where applicable.
What do you do if that's a one foot to eighteen inch gap, I mean, what landscaping do you want there?
Yeah.
I mean, I.
It'd almost be better just to cement it, or, you know, so that, versus a weed patch, you know, or.
Some rocks. Some rocks.
So I think we need to be flexible on that based upon what that, I mean, especially if, if it ends up the, the neighbor's fence stays there and you have this big, and so now you create a, you know, there's. I think the where applicable is probably good, but we just need to understand what that means, that.
And, and I, one thing I want to be clear about the fence is, we always require the developer to put in a fence, so.
Correct.
Even if he has to move his on his own property by six inches to get it in, he's.
Well, yes, that's why, but if that's six inches now makes that, that, that strip un, makes it so you not gonna land, it makes no sense to landscape, but I don't want him to have to.
I just.
Try to landscape something, irrigate or something for a little tiny strip, I'd rather have him.
I think just maybe.
Yeah, when it comes to that, we'll put a twelve eighteen inch patch of asphalt.
Yeah, something there and just, just, just get it done so that you don't have that mess, and so.
We don't want people, we don't want landscaping, you know, encroaching into the trail and stuff, so we'll, we'll, I think you just add that word applicable.
Well, where applicable, then, we know what that means.
Okay, that's what I wondered, what, how the language should be on that.
For the neighbors, as a project, everything, you know?
So that would be on number?
Number eight, we want to u- add the word where applicable.
On the end of the first sentence.
Yeah. Yep, there, okay.
And then number three, you could change that to um that it would be a thirty foot setback.
Yes.
On, on, and specify the two buildings.
Building A and C will be.
C, A and C.
Yeah.
And yeah, just put a minimum, they, they could make it bigger if they wanted, but just put a minimum of thirty foot setback.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, any other questions or discussion among the commission?
Did we care to add anything about the clear story windows?
Yes.
I don't.
It's our new word.
It is, have to use it.
That was one of the changes that you were making, right?
Yeah, we were gonna put that, wasn't it on?
Yeah.
The section with the overhead doors?
Six, I think, number six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Only clear story windows will be on the.
North.
North elevations of buildings A and C.
Right. It looks good.
And just to clarify, Mike, right, it says, I believe up in the first, if this, if they don't do. This agreement and get everything done, it just, then the zoning, which is next, doesn't happen.
That's right.
Okay. Okay.
I do just want to say thank you to the developer for working with us on this, we really appreciate all that you've gone through with us on this, and thank you to the public. I know you're gonna say this too, but I, I wanted to express my gratitude for showing up and, and speaking your minds, I appreciate it.
Okay, anything else?
I'll make a motion.
Ready for that?
I move to recommend approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty two dash R to adopt the development agreement between Westland Development LLC and Linden City. With the discussed and recorded changes by staff uh brought up during this discussion.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The voting is unanimous on the development agreement and I will echo Commissioner Don, as the chair, that this is, uh, it's great to see. Both residents and developer work together and come up with something that I think will be beneficial for the city and for both the developer and the resident, so. Let's, not every day we get people that are happy on both sides, so, you know, that, that's, that's a nice thing. Okay, so now we'll move on to item five of our agenda, which is a general plan amendment. We held the public hearing for this, this item last time.
And again, this is changing the, the designation of the general plan from flex office to flex commercial.
To flex commercial, um, we've, we had lots of discussion last time, so I'll ask the, the commission, is there anything else now that we've gone through the development agreement that you'd like to ask or add to this? If not, I think we'll, we'll call for a motion. Any, anybody wanted?
Is it be a motion on uh item five, correct?
Yeah, item five, which is just.
In the general plan.
Yeah, I, I'm ready to make a motion, if nobody has any comments.
Okay.
I move to recommend approval of ordinance twenty twenty five dash twelve dash O to amend. The Linden City general plan, future land use for the properties located at two thirty one south, eight hundred west. And three forty five south, eight hundred west, three thirty eight south and six seventy west from flex office to flex commercial. With the following conditions, which there are none.
Uh, just, that's all items to the staff.
Continue to work with staff, period.
Continue to work with staff, period.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, oh, go ahead. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The voting is unanimous, that will move on to the city council. We'll move on to, uh, item six, this is actually the, um, the motion for rezoning. The only question I have, do we need to add anything in here about the development agreement, that the zoning is contingent, I mean, it's in the development agreement, so I'm assuming that they take care of themselves, but.
I mean, you, you could add a condition on there that, um.
The conditions of the development agreement are followed?
Yes.
So that, that's the only thing I would recommend that we add to the motion. Any discussion?
Again, you're changing the zoning from research and business to regional commercial.
Yeah. Any discussion on this one? Um, I don't have any, so with that, I will call for a motion. And just add that one condition, that it follows the development agreement.
Um, I'll do that.
Okay.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash.
Just, we need to say move to recommend approval, sorry, that, that, it's wrong there, but.
Oh, that's right.
Because it needs to go to the city council.
Because it goes to city council, okay. Uh, I move to recommend ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirteen dash O. I'll start over. There's a reason I'm the junior member here, uh, I move to, uh, recommend approval of ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirteen dash O to amend the Linden City zoning map from research and business to regional commercial with the following conditions, um, items of the staff report, and I've forgotten what was the other?
Conditions of the development.
The, yes, and all conditions of the development.
And all conditions of the development agreement.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The voting is unanimous, so these three items will now move on to the city council, we're looking forward to seeing this development and you working with your neighbors. Anything else you have for the mic?
Nope, I hope, I've gotta check the agenda for next week, but does next Tuesday work for you for city council?
Monday?
No, they.
They moved?
They moved it because next Monday is the citywide drill. Okay.
Okay.
And the residents, you're welcome to attend on Tuesday as well, if you, if you'd like, with the city council meeting.
Yep, thank you so much.
Uh, five fifteen, but let me give him my, uh, call down, just, um, because I don't want you to show up at five fifteen, it's not gonna be here till seven.
Part of the heritage trail.
I'm trying to give you an idea, once the agenda is out.
Easements and right of ways, and some of them got used, some of them did, but this is a pretty handy little connection, yeah, I've used it.
We will move on to item eight, which is our community director and commissioner reports, and.
Uh, the only thing I have is for the next meeting, um, you'll be hearing the, uh, site plan approval for the sports facility on seven hundred north from, from Jason Brown, so.
Okay.
And that meeting, oh, I can look it up, but I, just the date on that?
Uh, the twenty third.
Yeah.
The twenty third.
I just have a couple.
Okay, go ahead, Sharon.
Some of us received this park's master plan survey today, and I haven't had a chance to go through that completely, did that go out citywide, or was that just?
It did on social media and in the newsletter, and then they did, and they mailed, um, note, that to people who live within a certain proximity to a park.
Okay.
Or a future park.
Okay, I just asked, got asked that question of who actually received this.
Yeah, I should send it out to all of you so you can, um, review, because I do want citywide, um, participation in it, so I'll send that out to you.
No, I've got, I've got mine right here, I just haven't gone through it yet, um, and then I had a question too, over on the corner of State Street and four hundred north.
Mm-hmm.
That's the, you know, where they tore down the old building, I think it's Azerson's property.
Oh, yeah, he sold it.
He sold it, okay, so all those, all those trees.
Carson's just cleaning it up. Carson?
Yeah, I saw that, but.
He, he bought it.
Oh, Carson bought it. Yeah, Carson bought it, he, he met with me a couple of weeks ago, he would like to subdivide it into two, uh, properties and sell it off for commercial.
Okay, and that's what I wondered, what was happening with that property, because there's a lot of cleanup going on there.
So Todd Carson owns a home that's just, uh, east of that.
Yep.
And so he has vested interest in what goes there. Todd Carson, who owns the, he has a little rodeo ground in front of his house, it's directly across from my old, where my old business was.
And that's his spot, I didn't know who Carson was, so.
Yeah, he lives right, right here, sorry.
Well, that house right there is the old Wadley Harm, home.
I seen he was doing all the work, but I didn't know that he purchased it.
I sent you a question, but I'll talk to you about that afterward, earlier in the week.
Okay, sorry, I don't know if I saw that, I apologize.
It's okay, it's all right, you're always good to answer my crum, crazy questions.
Okay, is there anything else from any of the commissioners?
I wanna, I wanna take this training, but I tried to take it and I can't get on.
No, I can't get on either.
Yeah, and our IT guy's been on vacation the last, uh, week and a half, and so every time I mean, every time I see him, I forget.
I just don't want you to, you're waiting on me, I'll do it, but I just can't get on.
Yeah, I will too, but you can't get on, I've been trying, I've been trying a number of times for a couple months.
I'll admit, I've given up trying, I just give the notices, so when you tell me it'll work, I'll do it.
Oh, it's a city training, I think on, uh, IT.
Oh, before, yeah, yeah, cybersecurity.
Security.
Hey, can we get a waiver if we do it at the bank we work at? I mean, I do that, and I think that's why I can't get in, is because I'm trying to, it, it's trying to log me in at the credit union and not letting me make another login.
Yeah.
I just screwed up, because everyone's having the problem but me, and I'm hoping it's just because I must have done it early before all these problems happened, I don't know.
I tried to get it early.
I'm sure you two don't wanna train the rest of us, so let's just.
Well, there's no training.
Yeah, the only thing that our IT guy said to me was, if they're having it forwarded to their personal account, it won't open it, they have to.
It has to be Linden City.
You have to do it through your city account.
That's what I tried to do. Tried to use my city account.
I'll try again, but, okay.
But let me check with him when, next time I see him.
Let's see if we can get a waiver.
Yeah, you're not gonna get kicked off the commission or something, so don't.
I'm, I'm forced to do it all the time, because I, I get tripped by HR or something, and.
Yeah.
It's really a sanity check.
I know, I've done them a lot before too.
Have we heard anything more from Castlewood?
We have not.
From who? Castlewood, the developer for seven hundred.
All, all I've heard is that they are working on, on updating their site plan.
They did meet with all of the city council members individually, just to try and understand what we are hoping and what we really want, it was, it was a great move, I think, uh, we felt that they have gone out of their way to try and accommodate, um, what our city would like to see go there.
Well, I listened to your city council meeting online, but are there other things that you would like us to know as a body?
I've been in that gig. I think the first bishop toured the temple yesterday or today, I mean, we've been making a little progress. But you're still looking, you know, January, February, or probably March, April.
There is a rumor floating around February, is there any?
No, no.
For spring, in our state.
I think you might, I don't know, they see them later than that.
My guess is, if it's that close, I'll wait for school to get out.
Yeah, they just will.
We, we've asked to be on their, you know, planning committee, and we haven't received an invitation, so.
It's private.
It's not even in the planning that, it's just stuff.
The planning committee for.
For the open house.
So, um, Wayne Corbridge and Wayne and Brenda have been called.
Yeah, they're over there.
To head that up, and so it is, I mean, it's happening, but they don't have a date either.
Yeah.
Daryl McAdams, their executive secretary.
There's a few couples that have been called.
I have neighbors that keep asking me questions and saying, it's gonna be on the planning commission meeting, and I said, well, I haven't seen it, that development there, uh, in the hollow, the residential development.
Yeah, they filed their application, um, two weeks ago, and they have yet to pay their application fee.
All right, so it might be soon, but.
It, it'll be in the next month, month and a half, probably.
Which one are you referring to, Rob?
Uh, the one there by.
With the mansion there, or?
Yes. So it'll, it'll be phase two of this property.
Of the old Davis property.
So they, they bought the.
Yeah.
Oh, I can't.
Phase two has already gone through, right?
Phase one, phase one has been approved up here, phase two, um, they, they have submitted their application but not paid for it, so. They, they got after us for thinking we didn't approve their plans quick enough, and now we're waiting on them for two weeks to pay their fees, so.
They are moving forward, that's good.
Yeah, but I mean, we haven't recorded the plat for the first phase, so it's been ready for a month now, and we're waiting on them to submit a infrastructure bond and to get us, uh, uh, the recording fees, so.
But the Valums all signed and by all the departments.
Yeah, the plat's all signed, so it's been hurry, 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 then wait on us, so.
Uh, I didn't go to that ribbon cutting ceremony for the Linden Heritage Trail, but we did ride that, and if you guys have not done that, encourage you to do that, it's, goes through some very industrial parts of our city, but we rode it on, uh, Labor Day, and there was nobody on it, and Murdock Canal Trail was just a mess, so we found it quite refreshing, and then you can hook on to the trail that goes along Utah Lake.
Yeah.
And go down another couple of miles, it's really lovely, so, yeah, on e-bike, so if you have a chance, get on that and enjoy it.
On it every day.
On the, the Heritage Trail?
On it?
I say I have family members that go on it every day, I go more on the Murdock, but they go down there.
On the Heritage Trail.
Certainly quieter.
Yeah, it is.
But did you find a few areas that you wouldn't want your wife riding by herself? There are, aren't there, that where the big cottonwood trees are and stuff?
Yeah.
You just have to keep your mouth shut.
You're not gonna go there in the night.
You'll get bugs on your teeth.
Yeah, well, that too, but, yeah, there, there, there's been quite a few encampments in those cottonwood trees down there.
Right there by the power plant.
Yeah, I, I told my wife, she couldn't ride that trail unless I was with her and, and my forty-five.
But it, it's enjoyable, it's a nice, it's a nice, uh, amenity.
We should go.
Let's go with Mike.
Go in pairs.
I think I wanna go with Mike.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for staff or the commission? Okay, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, the voting is unanimous, and the meeting is adjourned.
Neat to have that sports facility site planned, now if that comes to us for the site plan, it doesn't ever go to.